I have no, you can hear me now? Can you hear me now? Alright. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Millbury City Council Meeting of March 12th. Can I have your roll call, please?
All council members are present.
Okay, thank you. And...maybe Ms. Van Ward? Can I impose upon you to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I stand over your heart, Jesus. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Debbie Van Ward, President of the Millbury Community Foundation. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a lot of ceremonies tonight. First, we have the Greek Independence Day. So, do we have any Greeks here? Alright. Okay, on March 25th, 1821, the people of Greece declared independence and liberty from the Ottoman Empire, which occupied Greece for nearly 400 years. On that day, the Bishop Germanos-
Rakamos. Rakamos.
What?
Yeah.
Petros?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Raised the Greek flag in the monastery of-
Aegia.
One you read this.
Inciting the Peloponnese to rise against their oppressors and after many years of war, the allied support of Greek, of Great Britain, France, and Russia, the people of Greece won their independence from the Ottoman Empire on September 14th, 1829. And Americans, whose families immigrated from Greece, celebrate this day by displaying the national flag of Greece wearing traditional Greek attire and hosting festivities and festivals in commemoration of their ancestry. Who won, ancestors who won and gave their lives so that their prosperity would be free from oppression. And the city of Millbury recognizes Greek Independence Day and honors the heritage of more than 1.3 million Americans of Greek descent. Now, therefore, we, be it resolved, we, the members of the Millbury City Council, do hereby declare March 25th, 2019 as Greek Independence Day. And we hereby encourage our community and businesses to use this day to celebrate the people of Greek heritage from all over the world and celebrate Greek Independence Day. And just as another side note, when the Greeks were asked to surrender, they sent back a one-word response, "Ohi", which just means "no", and that was it. About 400 years of slavery and they were able, with the support of others, to come out. Thank you.
And we'd like to thank our notable Greek here. She's been doing a fantastic job.
Angela Lewis back there, too.
Angela Lewis. For phenomenal service to our city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, do we have any Mills Drama students here? Do you have a presentation?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks. There's a, let me get you a hand mic. Come on up.
You want to announce us?
Alright.
No, please.
So I'm really grumpy from painting the set.
You gotta come over and-
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for having us. My name is Joe Huddelson. I'm the Director of Mills High School Production of Beauty and the Beast. Next weekend. You don't want to miss it. I want to introduce our amazing actors, or maybe we'll have them introduce themselves. Why don't you come up here, guys? They just got done from rehearsal, so they're a little-
Don't be camera shy.
We're a little haggard, but that's okay. Here, why don't you introduce yourselves? We even brought The Beast, Gaston, and others. Here they are.
Hi, I'm Richard.
I'm The Beast.
Hi, I'm David Cortez, and I am Gaston.
Hi, my name is Brennan, and I'm The Prince.
Hi, I'm Madison Shoning, and I play the wardrobe.
Hi, I'm Benjamin Garcia, and I play the baker.
Yeah, please.
Alright, if you don't mind, we're going to perform one of our greatest numbers, Gaston. Alright. You guys ready?
Here, use the mic. Because then it'll be on TV.
Gosh, it disturbs me to see you, Gaston, looking so down in the dumps. Every guy here liked to be you, Gaston, even when taking your lumps. There's no man in town half as mired as you. You're everyone's favorite guy. Everyone's awed and inspired by you. And it's not very hard to see why. No one's slick as Gaston, no one's quick as Gaston. No one's neck is incredibly thick as Gaston. For there's no man in town half as manly. Perfect and pure paragon. You can ask any Tom, Dick, or Stanley, and they'll tell you whose team they prefer to be on. No one's been like Gaston, a king been like Gaston. No one's neck is as godless, well, cleft in his chin like Gaston.
As a specimen, yes, I'm intimidating.
My, what a guy, that Gaston. Give five hurrah, give twelve hit hit. Gaston is the best, and the rest is all drips. Thank you. Come and see these guys next Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The Saturday show, we have a special kids' performance. So, dress like one of the characters from a Disney show. Get in for a discount. Also, 1 o'clock next Saturday, fun for the whole family. You get to meet Belle and this guy. Uh, no, we'll meet Gaston. We want to hide The Beast for you. Thanks for your time, everyone.
If you, if you can introduce yourself. Oh, oh, don't go away. Don't go away. Introduce yourself one more time, please.
Once again, Joe Huddelson, Director, Mills High School.
Richard Schaffalter, The Beast.
Madison Shoning, the wardrobe.
Brennan Fung, the prince.
David Cortez, Gaston.
And Benjamin Garcia, the baker.
So we have a little accommodation for your crew. You can share. And we're looking forward to your play. I'm going to be there every night. And that's not because my son's in the pit, so. Okay, come and take a picture.
And where do we get tickets? Where do you get tickets?
Tickets at the door, or you can contact me. Leave my business card, and I can get you your tickets. No problem.
Up front, Mr. Director. Get in the picture.
Okay, as many people know, last week, we had, March 8th, we had International Women's Day. So, would my colleagues like to go up, come up, or you want me to read it from the podium? Okay. That's true. And I like to say that we're very proud of the fact that at one time, 80% of our leadership in the city were women. That included the city manager, the attorney, our city attorney, the fire chief, not the fire chief, the police chief, and head of our community development. So, in 1975, during International Women's Day, the United Nations began celebrating March 8th as International Women's Day. International Women's Day is a time to reflect on the progress made to call for change, celebrate acts of courage, determination by ordinary women who have played an extraordinary role in the history of their countries and communities. On this day, women can celebrate the progress that has been made but also contemplate those areas of women's lives where more can be done. Women's access to education, healthcare, and paid labor has improved, and legislation has promised equal opportunities for women and respect for human rights that has been adopted in many countries. Nowhere in the world can women claim to have the same rights and opportunities as men. Until we all work together to secure rights and the full potential of women, lasting solutions to social, economic, political problems are unlikely to be found. And the city of Millbury recognizes that the future in many ways depends on the success of women in our community, where women represent 60% of our city's selective representatives and 57% of the city's executive management. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbury City Council, do hereby declare March 8th as International Women's Day. Yeah, please.
So, I know there's a little bit of confusion going on in what exactly is International Women's Day, and it's a global day of celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. The day is also marked with a call of action accelerating gender parity. It's a day not country, group, or organization-specific. It belongs to all groups collectively everywhere. The story of women's struggle for equality begins to no single feminist, nor to anyone, organization, but all who care about human rights. And this day is about unity, celebration, reflection, advocacy, and action. It's been observed since in the early 1900s, and its achievements in many countries have seen a lot of improvements. I want to end by saying that every day should be International Women's Day.
Okay, if I could have, let's see, the Comfort Women Justice Coalition, co-chairs Judge Lilly Singh, Jin Duck, and Kang Sik Kim Foundation, and Chair Jonathan Kim, and Vice Chair Soon Run Kim. To the podium, please. Okay, we have a proclamation here. And it says, "Whereas Millbury celebrates the right of women to be free from sexual enslavement and being used as a strategy of war, whereas the city of Millbury remembers and honors the courage and resilience of the victims of the largest sex trafficking in modern history, euphemistically called the Comfort Women. During World War II, hundreds of thousands of girls and women were sex trafficked from more than 13 Asian countries under an imperial Japanese military Comfort Women system to be sex slaves for the Japanese military. Whereas this dark history was hidden for 40 years until the Comfort Women survivors came out and told the world what happened and demanded an apology and reparation from the Japanese government. It is acknowledged that today's Japanese society regrets the past actions of a warring society from the late 1900s to the defeat of the Imperial Japan in 1945. That the current society of Japan has taken steps to address and preclude the mistakes of the past. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Wayne Lee of Millbury City, recommend and honor the Comfort Women's victims for their courage to break silence leading the way for hundreds and thousands of victims of sexual violence to do the same, as history does not repeat itself." And I think the reason why this is important, the reason why this is important because we really need to pay attention to history. And regardless of who did it, whatever, in our past, we all, you know, it's not, we can't say it's our fault, it's our grandparents' fault, but what we can do is make sure this doesn't happen in the future. And make sure that all, that all citizens are respected. And I think that's the reason why this is important. This is not an issue about bashing for Japan. This is not about trying to make one country responsible. I think they've taken responsibility. So, the point is, is that we want to make sure and preclude this is not going to happen again. And I offered this to my city council members, fellow council members, to sign, but I guess they've declined, so it's coming from me. Thank you.
Honorable City Council, women and men, and the most honorable mayor of Millbury, it is a real honor for me to be here today to share with you my feelings about this horrible chapter, history, about what happened to the Comfort Women in 13 countries in Asia, more than 13 countries. Hundreds of thousands of girls and women were captured and made sex slaves during war, in World War II. And many of them were just younger than the students who just performed earlier. I have visited some of them that are now in their 90s, and many of them have died. This is the first time the city of Millbury has bestowed this proclamation in honor to recognize the Comfort Women who have suffered so much. I'm saddened that the council persons of Millbury did not join in this proclamation. I was hoping to have everybody that represents this beautiful city of Millbury, which has over 60%, over 60% Asians, will join in this proclamation. But I'm delighted to receive the proclamation from the city of Millbury on behalf of the mayor of Millbury, whom I've known and respected for a long, long time. I think this chapter of history really needs to be remembered and taught in schools. So, history is very important. History is facts. We cannot deny history. It's not whether or not we're on one side or the other side. Nobody enjoyed the history of Europe. What happened in Germany, it was horrible. Nazism was terrible, and so was what happened in Asia to these Comfort Women. But I think that most people will recognize that. And Nazi World War II in Germany, Poland, are being taught in schools. Unfortunately, World War II history in Asia is seldom taught in schools throughout the world, especially in America. Some people may ask, why do we need to teach Comfort Women history in the United States since it happens so far away? Well, the same thing happened in Europe, many, many, many miles away. So, I am really honored to be here again. I wish the other council people would have joined in this proclamation, but thank you, Mayor Lee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jonathan Kim. On behalf of the Jin Duck and Kyung Sik Kim Foundation in the Bay Area Korean-American community and the Comfort Women Justice Coalition, we are honored to be here to celebrate International Women's Day and to talk about Comfort Women. I would like to express my sincere appreciation to Mayor Wayne Lee and the members of the Millbury City Council who organized this event. Their statue, the San Francisco statue, marks the 8th Comfort Women Memorial built in the United States. And this is the first time in history. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, this is the first time in history that the Koreans- is the first time in history that the Korean, Chinese, and Filipino communities, along with the victims of all 13 communities, have joined hands to create such a monument. Our intercultural alliance is very special. We hope that one day, all 13 nations whose women, little girls, and boys were enslaved as Comfort Women and Comfort Boys may stand together as a symbol of justice for our future. To commemorate the first anniversary of San Francisco’s Comfort Women Memorial, more than 500 members of the Korean-American Community, Chinese-American Community, and victim communities from all around the world march through the heart of the San Francisco in the name of justice for the Comfort Women and for the advancement of women’s rights in everywhere. During the months of September and October, the Bay Bridge Skyway was highlighted by an educational billboard dedicated to the memory of the Comfort Women’s victims and survivors. I want, I want the generation of today to know about the pain of what happened. Knowledge is power. Only by bringing our communities together can we combat this ongoing violence. Together, let us stand as a beacon of hope for all the victims of sex trafficking who are still in this world. May they know they are not alone, that justice and freedom are coming. But our work is only beginning. As stewards of this monument, we want to honor the sacrifice of the Comfort Women in ever-growing circles. We hope that, we hope that in so doing, we can be a voice of hope in the darkness for those 4.5 million women, children, and men who are still sex slaves today, and for those countless others who live with painful memories and fear of sexual... And thank you very much for your attention, and thank you.
Good evening. I’m retired Judge Julie Tang, and I’m very proud to be here, standing with Mayor of Millbrae, Mr. Wayne Lee. I just came back from the San Francisco Unified School District, which also was just celebrating International Women’s Day by issuing a proclamation very similar to the one, Mayor Lee, that you are issuing today, and I hope to be joined by all members of the Commission to commemorate the Comfort Women Justice Coalition, and also to celebrate the courage of the Comfort Women to speak out and to tell the world how horrible they have been treated by the Japanese military, and that sexual violence and also sexual enslavement would never happen again. And the superintendent of the Unified School District made a very important remark. He said today is celebration of International Women’s Day, and the vision of the San Francisco Unified School District is peace to the community and freedom from sexual harassment and violence for women. I think those are the two visions that we also should join in to celebrate. The Unified School District is an educational institution. It is an inspiring institution because it is laying the foundation for the values that the students must have, must be embedded into education in addition to all the four, you know, all the four basic subjects, but values for peace, values for women to be free from rape, violence, sexual enslavement. And this is what your proclamation is all about. Mayor Lee, I celebrate your courage today to speak up. This should never be an issue of controversy. This should be an issue that every one of us should embrace and celebrate, to have women free from sexual violence. Let’s have it never again, never again. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Judith Murkison. I’m president of the Comfort Women Justice Coalition, and I’m so delighted to have this proclamation, and I honor you, Mayor Lee, for taking the courage and the bravery in the face of what shouldn’t be controversy. There’s no controversy involved in facts, right? You know, we’re living in a world where fake news is often what we get, and it’s fake news to say that this didn’t happen, unfortunately. It’s fake news to say that 400,000, maybe even more, women and girls, mostly girls, weren’t sexually abused and raped during World War II in Asia. It’s fake news when we put one kind of thing against another. This is International Women’s Day. This is a time when we’re honoring all the women who were brave, all the women who were fighting, all the women who every single day faced sexual harassment and sexual abuse. You know, these women broke a silence of almost 40 years. Why were they silent? They were silent because unfortunately, in this day and age, still, it’s a shame if you get raped. It’s not the shame of the man, it’s the shame of the women. And these women bravely, because other women supported them, began to speak out in the 1990s, and they helped lead the world to say that rape as a strategy of war was a crime against humanity, and they helped the United Nations say that rape was a form of torture. So what better way to celebrate International Women’s Day than to honor them? You know, our statue, we go and speak all over the place, and you know, everywhere we go, some student, some young person will come up to us and say, “I heard about these from my family. I’m so glad that you’re actually talking about them. I’m so glad to honor them, and that’s what you’re doing today, so thank you so much, and happy International Women’s Day. Let’s make this something that we do every year.”
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Having worked with you on this resolution, I’m sorry that the city staff did not include other names on it, but I do feel strongly that history should never be ignored, and I’m sorry, it was kind of last minute that the staff was not able to include other names. So we greatly appreciate you all being here and educating the public that this type of history should never, ever be repeated.
I thank you, Councilwoman Pappin. We will redo the resolution to offer a council opportunity to sign the paper, and I’m sorry that maybe the wrong proclamation went out.
That’s okay. We wanted to have something here.
Let me just also reiterate that this is, this is just about the history. There’s two things here. One, sex trafficking on women, and it continues to happen today. And if you are not talking about it, if you’re not keeping your eyes open, you are part of the problem. You are not the answer. You are condoning sex trafficking. You’re condoning violence against women. So if you see, if you see people running, a bunch of people coming into a house that you don’t recognize, you should call the police. If you see, if you see something that, you know, looks like it’s trafficking, you need to do something. You don’t have to sit there and just, just not say anything. That’s why I’m doing this. Second of all, this is a particular Comfort Women thing. It was institutionalized, pushed by regime, a regime, and we do not, you know, this is almost as bad as, to me, as just the Holocaust, where people were, where a regime went and exterminated people. To me, it’s degrading, it’s a violation, and we should all stand for the women and for our kids, you know, our parents, and who had to go through this. Now my, let me tell you, I am, I am not against Japan. I actually went to the council general to speak to the consulate. Even when my father, when he was alive, told me, you know, “I can’t, I don’t want you go into the Japanese consulate.” And the reason why was because even though he served in the Korean War for this army, when he was a young boy, he had to hide every day from the Japanese, because they were, they were rounding up kids or boys and executing them. So he had to run, and he even didn’t have to, he couldn’t eat. So I went against that and said, “No, we have to build these bridges.” You know, that was the past, there was a lot of mistakes done, and we need to bridge, build those bridges. Now, we cannot build bridges if you do not face the problem. If you don’t admit that there was an issue that happened, history will repeat itself, and nobody will ever solve that issue. So I’m asking everybody to come together, and that’s what they asked me to do. The Japanese consulate asked me to bridge the gap. This is what I’m doing.
Councilwoman Pappin, I owe you apology. I thought you had refused to sign. So that’s what the message I got. So I need to correct it because the media is here. We have a lot of media present. I don’t want the media to go out saying that Council of Millbrae refused to sign this proclamation except the mayor. So Gina Pappin, Honorable Commissioner, I appreciate your correction, and I look forward to getting a proclamation signed by all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let’s moving on to the...
Can I make a comment?
Okay, Councilwoman Aliva, please.
So I wanted, I wanted to make a comment with regards to the human trafficking and acknowledge that it still exists today, and I want to just give a little shout-out and kudos to I C R Chiefs back there, Paul. If, if you could actually maybe get us a presentation on what the task force has been doing in the sheriff’s office, I don’t expect it tonight, but I know that personally, I witnessed it firsthand, whatever you want to call it, a bust in Millbrae, and they have worked really hard, and they have been very successful in some statistics to, watching history that hasn’t been passed but is actually happening in our city today. This, this, this issue exists, and we need to, we need to still do something about it. So it’s not something to celebrate that it did happen, or didn’t happen, or whatever the proclamation is saying today, but...
First off, there’s no question it did happen.
Okay, excuse me, I didn’t mean to say it that way. But with regards to that, I don’t want to say history is past and we learn from it. We’re still living it. And our sheriff, we do have a task force team that is working on this, and it would be great to bring that to our city with some stati... Oh, we have somebody here.
See, they were all prepared.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief, Chief Kongko from our Sheriff’s Department, Police Chief in Millbrae.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, we don’t have a formal presentation. I was asked to bring our Human Trafficking Program Coordinator in today. His name is John Vannick. He’s retired, he’ll go through his bio, but he’s an amazing man. And what I, I’m the father of a young daughter. This kind of thing scares me as well. And Mr. Vannick has brought to our county a very high level of tactical prowess, knowledge, and a great teaching skill. He teaches not only first responders like cops and firefighters and emergency medical folks, but he trains people in the community as well. He’s done a tremendous job all over, and on behalf of not only the sheriff’s office, but the Police Chiefs Association, I proudly present Mr. John Vannick to share a few words with you on human trafficking and what we’re doing in San Mateo County.
Thank you, and I’d like to thank Mayor Lee and the Council for inviting me and giving me a few minutes to tell you about Human Trafficking Program. So just a little bit of personal history. I’m retired from the San Jose Police Department, where I spent 25 years retired in the rank of Lieutenant in 2011. And in 2006, I was a sergeant at the time in our vice unit, and I was assigned responsibility for one of the first federal grants awarded in the country to create a Human Trafficking Task Force. And this was at the very beginning of the nation’s response to human trafficking, and I was very fortunate by being in the right place at the right time and falling into a topic that I grew very passionate about. And when I retired in 2011, I was already doing some consulting work for the federal government, and since then, I’ve worked for a variety of federal agencies, state agencies, private organizations around the country. And a little over, about a year and a half ago, I received a phone call from a former colleague who at the time was the police chief in Daly City, Manny Martinez. And he said, “John, do you know we have this position of Human Trafficking Program Coordinator for County of San Mateo, and the position is open, and I was invited to come down and apply for the position.” So I was hired by the county in December, 14 months ago, and prior to that, prior to my being hired, Mike Brosnan, who some of you might know, he had been in the position for two years. And the county looked at the, looked at the program and decided to create a second position. So I have Ms. Pamela Estes, who works with me as the Human Trafficking Advocacy Coordinator. And together, we’ve done several things and accomplished quite a substantial list of things just in the last 14 months. The first thing we did, because people like yourself are asking, what’s the status of human trafficking? What’s the scope and prevalence in San Mateo County? So we were supported by the county and by the Police Chiefs and Service Association. We took about five months to analyze that within the county and also the response to trafficking within the county. And just, you know, a couple of numbers that I think are interesting. In the previous three years, we were able to identify that agencies within the county had served over 200 victims of human trafficking in the county. We also identified police reports that strongly included indications of human trafficking, many of which unfortunately were not properly investigated from that point on. And so we’ve taken steps to rectify that. We are working closely with a wide variety of community organizations, county and city organizations, to enhance the response to human trafficking in the county. We’re also spending a lot of time training law enforcement and other potential identifiers of human trafficking in other sectors within the county, within healthcare, within the school districts, et cetera. So another big thing that we accomplished, we set out to create a public forum. Prior to Pamela and myself taking on our roles, there was no public forum where people interested in human trafficking in the county could come together. So we have our Human Trafficking Initiative meeting. It’s every second Tuesday of the month. It was this afternoon. Everybody here is always welcome. If you’d like to come and join us, it’s open to the public. Today, we had a presentation from the Legal Affairs Council of the Mexican consulate in San Francisco, and next month, we’re going to be having a presentation by the Director of Homeland Security Investigations Human Smuggling and Trafficking Unit. We’re very happy that today we actually announced the, the public release of our program website. So I would ask all of you to go visit StopHumanTraffickingSMC, for San Mateo County, StopHumanTraffickingSMC.org. And you’ll have an opportunity to subscribe to the site, so when we post news items, meeting announcements, and other events, you’ll, you’ll receive that in your email, in your email. You can learn about human trafficking. It offers the definition of trafficking, talks about resources, and it will become a much more vibrant site than it already is to start. So those are some of the things we’ve done, and I’m happy to answer any questions you might have about trafficking in the county or our response.
Yeah, I’m sorry, are we still not posting at local hotels? Don’t, aren’t we, don’t we have flyers up?
We are. We are, Councilwoman. Yes, so most people don’t realize that California state law has for several years required certain types of businesses, in quotes, post a human trafficking awareness poster. And those businesses were places like, where there’s dancing, like pole dancing, those types of places, off-sale liquor license places. It was a specific list, but then California law added all hotels, motels, and air bed and breakfasts. Excuse me, bread and beck, bread and beck...
Bed and breakfasts.
Yes, I know, it’s been a long day. Bed and breakfast, yes. So, so last fall, we worked with the Bay Area Anti-Trafficking Coalition and other partners to create a new poster specific for the county. Prior to that, we were using another county’s poster, which I think we should have our own. But we, we distributed that to about 170 hotels in the county, and so, and those posters are available for any organization that would like to have them. And so we’re probably going to do a refresh distribution to all the other businesses. So those are required, and they have been distributed, along with FAQs about trafficking and training. We also offer training and resources for businesses.
Okay, and just as a final note here, for those watching, this is the most appalling thing, that this currently exists anywhere, and it does exist in Millbrae tragically. So we need to work as a community to prevent this from happening, and I’m glad that the district attorney and the Attorney General’s Office are prosecuting these to the nth degree. And we do want to send the message because usually the biggest victims are non-English-speaking residents within our community, and please, report anything you see or anything at all. This has to stop, no matter what. So we want to, we as a community, we as a council, everyone, needs to report anything that seems to be irregular... that seems to be irregular. Please, just pick up the phone and call. We will work with everybody. Thank you.
I know that there was a great county effort just before the Super Bowl, and it trained up a lot of the first responders and other people. We're a multimodal transportation center. Are there signage? And we're working on TODs right now, and we will be a hub of people coming and going, which is where a lot of young girls and young boys of all races, in fact, a lot of children escaping bad family situations or trying to find themselves, and they are targets. So do we have signage? Does the program have signage, things that we should be incorporating, things we should be using, working with BART with, with CalTrains with, to help the rest of us if we happen to get on the train and we see something and it doesn't feel right, but we don't quite know what to do?
That's a great question, Councilwoman. And so it's unfortunate that in just about every location in the country, if not the world, when we are responding to human trafficking, we run into this constant challenge of raising awareness and balancing that with the capability to respond. And while the County of San Mateo has invested in the response to trafficking for the last four years now, to a substantial financial investment, there's still gaps in the services that we have to respond. And so a lot of the work that we've been doing the last year is trying to better connect the dots, so when things are reported, they end up in the hands of the right people who know what to do. And so a lot of that is still going on, and we have to balance creating the mechanisms to respond to victims and to respond to incidents that need to be investigated with our capabilities. And so we have to be careful not to be too visible when we don't have the infrastructure to respond. So it's kind of a chicken and egg sort of situation sometimes. So your short story, or short answer is, we will be, but the longer answer is that we want to be mindful that if we create the appearance that we have the ability to respond at a certain level and with certain capabilities, and they're not in place, then we're only going to make the situation worse. Working with victims of human trafficking is exceptionally challenging, and it's absolutely critical that we establish and maintain trust with them. And one of the worst, excuse me, one of the easiest ways to break that trust is to sort of deliver a promise that you can't deliver on. So we have to be very mindful of that. But to your point of signage in transportation routes, that is a very valuable way to raise public awareness and help people understand how to contact the program, and that's certainly something we will be working on. We have to be, our positions have to be refunded through the county budget. We're very hopeful that our positions will be funded again for the next budget cycle. And so once we're clear about that, then we'll be making plans for our next two years' worth of work.
Councilwoman Aliva.
So within that budget, what happens to the victims? When you talk about retaining that trust, how do they get a better life?
So every victim of human, well, all of us are obviously individuals, and we have our own individual experiences in life, but if you look at the scope of victims of crime, victims of human trafficking typically come from a background of exploitation within their own families, within their communities, within their friends, and so they're in a very, very difficult situation. So they typically have far more issues or circumstances that they need to deal with than, if I can use the term, your average or regular sort of victim of crime. Most crime victims are like, you know, most of the people here. We get up and we go to school, or we have a job, and we have a stable environment, and then something terrible happens to us. Victims of human trafficking often have had terrible things happening to them for years, perhaps their entire lifetime. So that really critical piece of response is to have case management established that will be consistent to work with those victims from the moment we identify them, all the way through their transition from victimhood to being survivor of human trafficking, to help them navigate the process if they're involved as a witness in a criminal investigation and prosecution. And so, and also having the expertise within the case management piece to really look at all of the different needs that they have, and then having the expertise to fulfill all of their needs. So as an example, we have a case, this occurred in Redwood City. As we stand here today, the defendant in this case has pled guilty to human trafficking charges. He is awaiting sentencing. But in this case, the victim has issues dealing with childcare, substance issues, issues dealing with her social security status. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And so it takes a tremendous amount of dedication amongst victim services providers, and a lot of time and effort and money to really, to pursue all those things. So it's very complex work, which is why we have to be very mindful of how we build our program.
So that was my question. Is there budget in there to save these people?
So we have, within our program, we have a small budget that allows us to do, to offer some support. The District Attorney Office, the Victim Services Unit, is involved. We also have a variety of, a couple, a variety of nongovernmental organizations that also do work in terms of how that gets paid for. Sometimes it's already in the county budget, for instance, within the DA's office. If we have to hire somebody for some special work, we have a small budget, but probably not this fiscal cycle within the county, but in the future. If the program develops the way we would like to see it, we will be asking for a more robust support in financial terms from the county so we can have a really well-formed response modeled on the national, nationally-accepted best practices for human trafficking response.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, I don't generally bring my day job in here, but as a Deputy Attorney General, Deputy Attorney General Becerra, or, excuse me, Attorney General Becerra has made this a priority. So I suggest we start developing that partnership, and to say, the next fiscal year is just not acceptable. So whatever you need now, we need to deal with.
I appreciate your support.
Okay. I'm just thinking that the case that you might have used as an example in Redwood City sounds more of, I don't know the kosher word to use here, but it sounds maybe like a pimp that was caught. But the human trafficking that I've witnessed here in Milbrae, they're children, they have their whole lives ahead of them, and it's not about going to work, it's about going to school.
That's true, too.
So, I mean, I think that's what we, when we term the word "human trafficking," we have to develop young, a new generation, and we have to save everybody the best we can. We can't expect a 17-year-old to go to work when they're not educated.
Of course not. I was using that, you know, as an example, that comparing victims of human trafficking relative to the vast majority of other types of victims of crime, is the only comparison there. The county has already financed additional work through Rape Trauma Services to handle case management and support of child, victims of commercial sexual exploitation of children. So if you're under 18 and you're a victim of sex trafficking, the county has already dedicated extra resources specifically for that type of trafficking. But it's important to understand that in San Mateo County and throughout the Bay Area and around the world, there are several forms of human trafficking. And some types, some types of trafficking in different areas receive more attention and discussion.
What I would ask, if you could come back with a success story so that we can model the success? I mean, to throw money in a budget that we don't really, we have problems with everything? I would rather see what we have success with, and then we can advocate for budgeting on something that works.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, bring us a story, bring us a good story.
Well, the story that I told you is a very good story. This case in Redwood City, while it involves an adult, this person was absolutely exploited. They are absolutely a victim of human trafficking. The defendant in this case has pled guilty to human trafficking charges, not charges such as pimping and pandering, which...
No, I want her success, I think we're...
And her, and I can't discuss more of her story, but she's having, she's having a lot of success.
Good.
And the reality is that success for a victim of any type of crime is very subtle at times. And their challenges don't end with simply their case being adjudicated and being given support. They take, you know, it's a, survivorship is something that I don't wish on anybody. And in a 25-year law enforcement career, I spent two years specifically working only with victims of sexual assault. I understand the depth as best as a non-victim can, I believe. But we have to understand that it's a terrible thing they go through, and success for them quite often would not measure up to things that we would view as success for ourselves. It's a very complex environment. It's a very tragic environment for those that are caught up in it, regardless of age, regardless of gender, sex, nationality, immigration status. And the best thing we can do, and what the county is working towards, is a comprehensive approach to our response to human trafficking.
Thank you. So can we have some phone numbers that we can put on our website for, to give resources to people who are victims of, like Cora kind of comes to mind?
Yes, so there's, so if I, best thing to do is to go to our website. It'll tell you, it offers information both for folks within the county, how to reach out into the Human Trafficking Program itself. Now, it should be, what's important to understand is that both myself and Pamela Estes, our positions are part-time contractors with the county, we do not work full-time. So whenever anybody has any concern about an incident, the best response is to dial 911 and contact law enforcement for the city or the county in which they live. On the website, we also post the information for how people can contact the National Human Trafficking Hotline. When the hotline receives tips, no matter where they come from, if they relate to San Mateo County, they come to me and Pamela and a couple of others that are on the protocol for the response there. If you have questions about how to contact myself or Pamela for training, for posters, for questions about the program, our general email and a phone number is there for us also.
I think the mayor's asking for a link on the city site.
Yeah.
Yes, no, I understood.
We'll put a link and phone numbers on our city site, and that'd be really helpful. Thank you for your time, we really appreciate.
My pleasure. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, and I'd like to thank everybody. I'd like to thank everybody for making the time to come here to bring to light this very tragic issue that we all need to solve. And I apologize to my fellow council members for the fact that we didn't get you the proper resolution, and I'm sure you'll have an opportunity to sign that soon. Okay, so I have, we have some young students here that have school tonight, so if it's okay with the council, I'd like to move item seven up.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, so if we give you an opportunity, thank you for coming. So with the students of, so item number seven, do we have staff report, how are we doing this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce our Recreation Director, Ms. Mackenzie Brady, for a quick overview and staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'd like to introduce the members of the Milbrae Cultural Arts. We have Pam Foss and Debbie Van Wart here, and they will be going through this presentation and then introducing the students whose designs have been selected.
You just have to scroll down. I think you can, look, you can also do this.
Sorry.
You're fine.
It's a pleasure to be here and introduce to you tonight the part of the winners of our contest that we started. And I'm not following this, so I have to... What do I do? Okay. Oh, I'm doing it, okay. Our committee has not been alive for about six years, and we just got going again, and we're excited to start accomplishing things. We talked about having a contest to paint over the graffiti that is on some of the utility boxes, and we selected five, and we have offered students to apply for the honor of winning and painting on our utility boxes. And that's what we're here to introduce you to tonight. It's a, it's the first time we've done this in Milbrae, and we're really excited to have this exposure and a new way to, a nice way to take care of our city boxes. Okay, so, what? No, you're gonna do that. So what started out to be five boxes still is, but we are only painting two at this particular point in time. The deadline for their drawings or descriptions was on February 20th, and we'll be painting those sometime in the spring, and when it's not raining. And then we will select the other three, and we'll do those in the fall. Okay, so...
So that's a bit of the background. Some people are wondering why we're doing this, and it's actually, it's to bring community art to, from our youth into Milbrae. If you go into South City, they have an awful lot of these utility boxes painted and such. And we thought that it was important to bring that to Milbrae as well. Community engagement and beautification and bringing our youth forward in applying some of these things. So first of all, I'd like to introduce our Taylor Middle School student who proposed her drawings, and her name is Leila. And your, the pronouncing, pronunciation of your last name is?
Ahalise.
Ah? Ahalise. So Leila, would you mind explaining some of your thoughts and how you came up with the worldwide sort of event that you, that you would like to apply to a utility box?
Sure. Okay, here you go. Thank you. So basically, it's the world, the United States, California, and the Bay Area with a pinpoint where Milbrae is, and then planes flying to it, and then it's decorated, the land is decorated with box, with different color, like boxes and rectangles, and around it are diff, are hello, is hello in different languages.
And I'd like to point out, this particular box that Leila will be painting is near the post office, and I don't know how to point, but it's the green box there, and she's going to be painting the entire box, each side and perhaps on the top. So she's got a lot of, a lot of painting to do. All right. Do you want to do St. Eustace?
And I'm introducing two girls who teamed up to paint one set of boxes. This is, come on, this is Chloe, Chloe Mercado, no, this is Chloe, and this is Samantha. I'm sorry, I just met them tonight. I'm sorry, I just met them tonight. And I have also asked them if they would sort of express how they came up with their idea and what it meant to them.
So I thought of this idea because I considered that each generation has something to offer, and like, we all can do something to make the community that much better. Like, it's already great now, but imagine in 20 years after so many generations have gone through, what the community can become.
So in the pictures, you see a hand holding the world with a flower on top, and throughout them, you see the flower being watered, and that represents us taking care of the world together. And then the sun comes out, and the flower blooms, and it shows that together we can make our community better, because right now, our world is going through many changes, and together we can all make the world a better place.
To give you an idea of the timeline, it's stated right here, but the submissions occurred, we did a selection of what happened. The first round of utility boxes will be completed sometime in June, and the designs for the second round of utility boxes will be due in October, and this is from our high schools, and is it?
The senior painting program.
Yes, yes. Oh, and the seniors, yes, they're very excited about submitting their ideas, so, and very excited about applying the paint. So through April of next year, we're going to be busy, and you'll be able to see some really beautiful utility boxes in Millbrae.
Girls, I know your parents are in the audience, and I think it would be great if we had a picture of your parents with, with our new artist and with our cultural arts committee. Mom, dad, brother, I met some of you. Hello, new moms. And we also want to thank our staff, Mackenzie Brady, Key Lim, and especially Charlene, and, and our city manager, Tom Williams, for spearheading this. And I thank Councilwoman Schneider. This is her particular project in which she spearheaded with the Arts Commission, and this is very exciting, add a little art, get the community together, and provide, and show what the community can do, especially our young.
I think you guys need to go down there, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Schneider.
Girls, you did a great job.
Is that okay?
I'm a little sore. There you go. Pardon my hand.
I wanted to mention to you really quick, the St. Dunston's utility box is in front of living spaces in the median, so it's kind of an interesting shape. Thank you again.
Thank you.
This is an action item, Vice Mayor Haller. We wanted to make sure that the council was comfortable with the art designs, because we talked about the two schools that were chosen, but I don't know if we need a formal vote on the art designs or not. The city manager says yes, Vice Mayor Haller. Thank you.
I just have a question in the report. It mentioned that there were other boxes that had been identified but could not be used at this time. Can you provide a little context on that and why, why not?
Are you referring to the other boxes, the other city-owned boxes, or?
They may, they may not be city-owned, maybe they're PG&E or?
Yeah, I think that the PG&E boxes that we reached out to PG&E, they used to have a program that would allow utility box painting, but they've since changed their policy, actually over the last 12 months, so.
PG&E and AT&amp;T boxes that are up by the library and by the city in this area.
Well, maybe if we can just sort of keep an eye on that and, you know, poke them every once in a while to see if they may be willing to change their policy or give us some type of an exception for that.
Yes.
And the city staff has been negotiating with them. The other boxes are typically owned by AT&amp;T and Comcast, and the cities that have gotten permission, for example, San Francisco has an ordinance that requires the utility companies to make sure that they are not covered in graffiti, and that art is one way to prevent the graffiti on it. So, and then just one of the ideas that I think the cultural arts committee is still thinking about, one of the booths, the, the girls from St. Dunston's will be painting in the middle of the median strip, so it's a little bit of a scary spot because of drivers in Millbrae. But in Los Gatos, the way that they've rolled out their utility box program is, they've made it a public event, so they caution tape out around the art, they invite the public to come down and watch, and in fact, in Los Gatos, they have used up the last of their boxes in commercial areas, and they're going, well, do we go out to the residential area or not? But the public has loved going out as a family and walking and seeing the booths. So this is probably part of the, someday we're gonna have a future art walk with all of our existing art and the new art that cultural arts will be helping to bring. Well, with, you know, those refrigerator-sized utility boxes on the sidewalks and all the complaints, they can use a little art, so, thank you. But thank you so much, girls, and for your family, and for the schools for St. Dunston's and Taylor. You are our, our beta test, and it's gonna be really exciting. And thank you again, Councilwoman Schneider. Can we have votes, please? Okay, ends that suspense.
The City Council approved the Taylor Middle School and St. Dunston's Design for Cultural Arts Advisory Committee Utility Box Painting Program. By the vote of five to zero, thank you.
All right, so on to, back to the agenda overview.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, city manager. Real quick, on the weekly update, as you did see, our new utility bills, we've heard from residents, and we've redesigned our monthly utility bill. It will include information on residents' meters, consumption history, and account activity, but I'd like to bring up our deputy city manager and finance director to actually step you through the details of the new utility bill that will be coming out. So welcome, Deanna Hillbrins.
Thank you, thank you, councilmembers, Mayor Lee. We did want to alert you through council, we'll be also sending a mailer and an insert in the next bill, but because the bills will look different also from the envelope that's coming, we wanted to really take the time to let you know of the change. So as you may recall, we've changed our whole financial system, and utility billing is the last piece to change, and that is going live currently, so they're doing the last, the first billing in the new system. And as a part of that, we've outsourced print and mail service and redesigned the utility bill to better provide information to the public. For example, this is the front of the bill.
I think they're one, asking if you can expand it so they can see. Thank you. Is that better, Dave?
So this is, the bill will be a full page, but this is just a little kind of tutorial as we send it out, so that people know where things are that they may be used to seeing. What we wanted to highlight is, you know, what your consumption is, we've got three years, or two years of historical consumption, so you can see how you've changed over time, better able to compare that information. We also had feedback that it was a little unclear which rate type you had, so for example, if you're in the, the customer assistance program or lifeline program, that will be identified on your bill more clearly, so that, that you can see your, your rates and your meter, and your meter size and information about your meter. The, the backside of the bill will also have some information for you. And a next step will be that we will, in the coming months, move to an online system, enabling you to pay your bills online, see your bills online. We do already, I think it's, maybe people don't know, but we do already offer an auto pay system. It is through a debit from your checking account right now. This new system, once fully live, will allow you to use credit card, for example, and also view your bill online. So we are continuing to improve technology for the public. It's just taken time, we wanted to be sure that all of these bills are correct, we want to be sure that we're sending the right information out to our customers, and, and that all of the bills are correct. So we've done a number of what we call parallel, so we run in two systems to see that the bills come out exactly the same in the current system and the new system in terms of amounts, but of course, they'll, they'll look different, and we hope it's appreciated by the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there any additional costs if someone wanted to charge their payments, and what levels of security do we have?
So when we go to online bill pay, that will be done through a secure website, it will be part of our financial system. So that will be done through the typical credit card secure system, so HTTPS secure system. Data is typically maintained, we do have some, for example, recreations on online system, so there's some mechanism for, for storing that data in a secure manner. It's not actually stored on the city system for protection, and we, even today, when we take credit cards, they're not stored, they're, they're put into the merchant processing system and, and kept there.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Schneider? What I am still trying to understand is how during a particular month in the wintertime, based on the lowest type of water use, how that affects your sewer use. And I have to admit, I was going through our bill last week, and I called Finance Department to try to get an explanation. And you could try to explain it here, or maybe that could be something to explain to people, because even over the years, through the drought, it made it very difficult to understand why your water use in the winter affects your sewer rate in the summer.
So the reason for that is that it's called winter averaging, and the reason that that is done is, in theory, in the winter, you're not typically irrigating. So when you irrigate, less of your water is going into the sewer system, it's being absorbed into groundwater. So by using winter usage, we can best account for what's actually going into the sewer versus watering your lawn or doing outdoor watering. So for that, that reason, it's a kind of a practice to use winter usage as a proxy for sewer usage.
So let me see if I can put that, if I use four units in the wintertime, and then I'm now in August, September, my sewer usage will be based on the four units, not on, say, the 13 that I'm using when I'm watering the yard.
You're watering your lawn and your garden.
Somehow, if we can make that really easy to understand, that, that was a good explanation, I, I think I finally got it, but it's a hard concept.
One of the great things that I'm excited about with this outsourcing of the utility bills is that we'll have room to put inserts into our bills, so we'll have information on the back, which we'll try to keep constant, but we can put more information in a, in a separate page, and it doesn't have to be necessarily about the water bills, but we can, we can do that about our utility bills, if there's a special program going on, we can do that. The, the catchy part is, it goes to half of the city at once, so we're trying to think that through, but we are really excited for the opportunity that it provides us in terms of getting more information out to our public.
Well, since you said that, at the Community Garden Subcommittee meeting last week, we talked about how to reach all of our residents, and this might be the only way, although it turns out if you're, some of our condo and apartment dwellers don't get a standalone utility bill. So part of that project, we're trying to figure out, how can we reach every residential unit? But this is at least one step closer.
Yeah.
Cool. Any other questions? What do you point at, Paul?
Is there a, is there a charge on a credit card?
So when you use your credit card to pay your utility bill, there is not a charge to the customer. So, and actually, as a part of our merchant banking system, we've agreed not to charge our customers, and we get a lower rate for that. And it's also easier for us to process, so it's, it's basically a win-win all around.
That's incredible.
So we do have a cost as the city, we use, it's a part of our administrative cost that's built into your rate.
Okay, thank, any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, first of all, thank you, staff, for doing this, this is a long coming and very difficult, and I think the rate pairs would be very appreciative to be able to read their, their bill in a clear manner. Thank you.
And we will be putting a lot of notices out during the coming week, and so if you hear about it, again, the most important thing is, it will look different, it's in a different envelope, we have a notice outside the envelope to let people know that it's important information, but if you do hear from residents, it is important to be looking for a different-looking bill. So thank you very much for your time.
Councilwoman Pappen?
Can we, difference really affects people, so I don't know how we, people get used to one thing and not the other, so I don't know if you have some sort of a system like that's gonna be smack on our website, or how we get that message out there, but it really throws people off, and I'm very happy for all the positive changes, but we need to be ready that a lot of people might accidentally misplace their bill.
Yeah, so we're, we're taking a number of actions, we're putting a notice on the outside of the envelope, so we're mailing two note, one notice of just this to tell people it's coming. We are on the bill that'll be inside, and both of those envelopes will have information that says your new utility bill is inside, or important information about your utility bill, so there's something on the outside of the envelope, hopefully triggering you to look at it. We'll use our social media resources, and of course, it will be on the website. So, and when we get to the point of late payments, or if people are on the verge of being turned off, we always call them, we do that today. So we may have more phone calls to make, but we'll make them.
Any questions?
And we'll work with our customers as well, by the way.
Thanks again, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may continue, as you all know, we have received a lot of inquiries, especially from some of the residents down on Landing Lane about FEMA and the FEMA floodplain map. So we do have a FEMA Flood Insurance Community Workshop scheduled for next Thursday, March 21st. It will be a joint, we'll have representatives from FEMA, as well as our public work staff under, under Key Lim, and we'll explain how the new FEMA flood maps work, flood insurance requirements for property owners in high-risk areas, methods of how to lower your points to reduce your flood insurance, as well as what the city is doing to reduce floodplain risks. So the workshop, again, March 21st, will take place at the, here in the Millbrae City Council Chambers, 621 Magnolia Avenue, and it will start at 6:00 PM with an open house for Q and A of staff, and then the actual presentation by FEMA will take place at 7:00 PM. So we look forward to seeing any, and welcoming everybody that's interested in FEMA, the floodplain maps. Also, tomorrow evening, March 13th, local residents can again learn about the benefits of owning an electric vehicle, including battery range and how to charge it, and current models that are available, leasing versus buying, and government rebates that are available to help people purchase a vehicle. That will be, that event will be at the library, One Library Avenue, starting at 6:30 PM. And again, as before, attendees can view different electric vehicles in the library parking lot, starting at 7:00 PM. So learn everything about electric vehicles tomorrow, March 13th, 6:30 PM, at our library. And then lastly, Millbrae Goes to the Movies again this Friday night, Jungle Book will be shown, it's the new version of Jungle Book. It will be the last indoor monthly movie of the year at St. Dunston's Gym, located at 1150 Magnolia Avenue. Doors open at 6:00 PM with snacks being served, with the movie starting at 6:30 PM. So again, this Friday night, Millbrae Goes to the Movies at St. Dunston's, 6:00 PM. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff overview this evening. Moving on to the agenda, we've got on the agenda itself, item number two, calendar of events, which is item number two in the attached agenda, also reports of bills and claims. Item number three is approval of the meeting minutes for the meeting of February 26th. There are no oral presentations from committee or commission chairs this evening. Then we have public communications, that's anything not on the agenda, people have, residents or anybody from the community has three minutes to speak on items not on the agenda. Moving to the consent calendar, item number five, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or is designated to execute an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with CSG Consultants for Contract Engineering, Plan Check, Building, and Related Services to Increase the Total Cost Contract by $200,000, the total contract from $750,000 to $950,000. So we're extending this agreement through the fiscal year, June 30th of 2019. Item number six is- Item number six is quarterly investment schedule for the second quarter of fiscal year 2018-19. That concludes the consent calendar. We've already heard item number seven. There is no new business this evening. After council comments, we do have a closed session for Better Millbrae versus City of Millbrae, San Mateo Superior Court, case number 18CIV04393. That concludes the agenda overview, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Any questions? None? No? Okay. Can I have the attorney's report? There's no report?
No report.
Oh, okay. Well, that was short. Okay, so let's move on to the minutes, and we have motions. Votes, please.
The meeting minutes for February 26, 2019 is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no oral reports, and we have one speaker, Paul Harrell. Thank you for waiting. Now you've been very patient. Don't forget your flyers.
Waited this long?
Sorry. I didn't get that in the memo.
Thanks. Well, again, I'm representing Meadows School PTO, and we're having our annual crab feed coming this weekend. So if you're interested in coming out and helping us to keep that fundraising going for a sixth year, it's going to be this Saturday from 6 to 9. And I have a flyer for each and one of you to think about, and please come and visit us and do, you know, enjoy the music and the auction that goes on. So please, this Saturday, March 16th, come and see us, enjoy our festivities. And here's a flyer for each and one of you. Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah. We're still clicking limits for lemonade, yes. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, and we have another speaker? Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I didn't see the speakers' cards until just now. My name is John Baker. Some of you may know my name. I am the San Mateo County liaison from the CPUC to local governments. And between the utility bill overview and the utility boxes, seems like I picked the right meeting to show up. I do want to note that I do live in South San Francisco, and looking at those utility boxes is always pleasant and a lot better than the dull gray or white that they're usually painted. I hadn't originally planned to be here tonight, but I was next door at the Community Center for the High Speed Rail Working Group. Councilwoman Snyder was so kind to drop by and remind us that you folks had a meeting tonight, so I thought I would just stop by really quickly and remind you that I exist. State government is obviously a very large bureaucracy, and sometimes it's hard to get through, and I just wanted to let you folks know, city manager, city attorney, as well as the council, that I'm here to help guide you through that process if you have a need of the CPUC, whether it's getting involved in a larger proceeding such as the PG&E fiasco or the, just have a hanging wire somewhere. I'm not always a subject matter expert, but I can get you one there at the PUC. So I'll send a reminder email in a few weeks, but in the meantime, I just wanted to remind you that I'm here, and thank you for hosting.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. So are you also the liaison for the CCAs, or whose part is?
I do work a little bit with Peninsula Clean Energy. They have a full, I want to say it's a regulatory liaison that usually works with us, but I do work with their outreach department a lot in trying to publicize the events and such.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Snyder?
Since you're here, and we did talk about the utility boxes, it has been, it would be lovely to get some help with PG&E on that. Even, we were, as it was presented to me, that they are concerned about First Amendment or bad things painted on the utility box. And I think when I spoke with the city manager and staff about that, if PG&E wanted to have approval of the art, I don't think, if we get the opportunity to paint their boxes, we're happy with them being a partner and choosing the art with it. So it wouldn't be anything that they would find offensive or a First Amendment issue. This was all over a Tern lawsuit, which I'm sure you know, the energy group out of San Francisco that sued them on a First Amendment basis. The nuances, I don't remember. But if there's any help there, feel free to talk to me, and we can try to get going, because they've got some prime real estate with those PG&E boxes.
They do indeed. I will say that most of the boxes that have been painted in the South City are telecom boxes, but I'm sure we could, I do have contacts at PG&E that I could get you in touch with if you're unable to reach a resolution on your own.
And to be honest, the staff of South San Francisco, their mural artist, or their mural staff person has been very helpful to us. So thank you to the City of South San Francisco, too, on that.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, and thank you, Councilwoman Snyder, for reaching out to Mr. Baker. Appreciate that. Okay, so we're done with public communications. How do we feel about the consent calendar? Anybody want a motion? Anybody? Anybody? Thank you. Votes, please.
Consent? Consent, item number five and number six, passed unanimously. Thank you.
Unless I don't see something here, looks like we're done with the agenda. So we'll go into public, I mean, council comments. Vice Mayor Holber, would you like to start off?
Sure. So to piggyback on the community meeting for High Speed Rail, the local policymakers group met a couple of weeks ago, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about High Speed Rail and what exactly is going on. The representatives that were there said things are moving ahead despite some interpretations of the governor's comments at the State of the State address. One thing that actually has moved up now ahead of schedule is the preferred alternative for the San Francisco to San Jose segment. That obviously includes City of Millbrae. That now will be moved up to September 2019. That will be released with a draft EIR released March of 2020. So an important opportunity for us to review those plans and make sure that the City of Millbrae, where the future High Speed Rail station would be, is adequately planned for and our needs are met. I think that is all that I have for this evening. Thank you.
You can always come back. Councilwoman Snyder, would you like to provide anything?
Most of my assignments are always in the beginning of the month, so there's always a lot at this time. You already heard from cultural arts, but they are also working on the cultural, the return of the Millbrae Community Art Show, which is April 5th and 6th, which is Progress Seminar, which is, at least in my case, somewhat up in the air about Progress Seminar. But if council members happen to be in town, the Friday night is the wine and cheese opening of the art show, and the awards of the various categories will be done on Friday, and then it'll be open, it's open to the public on Friday, but, and also on Saturday, but that's April 5th and 6th. And if you're out there in the public, you can contact Charlene O'Connell, our staff person, and get an application so that you can turn in art. All submissions are welcome. I should say, almost all submissions. Clearly, certain categories we wouldn't want to see. Tomorrow is the first of a series of climate resiliency workshops targeting specific environmental changes. Tomorrow's a workshop dealing with wildfire-ready and pulling in all the various stakeholders to talk about how we can become more wildfire-ready. The other thing that's happening in our area, it seemed like Northern San Mateo County received more particulate matter from the fires, from the campfire, and from the fires of the previous year. So there's a subcommittee out of the County Emergency Services Council looking at, what should we do to help our residents? And, as it turns out, our first responders and our public works and recreation staff, who might be outside at times when we're being basically covered in smoke. So new sets of, there's nothing yet, but it may be health guidelines. It may be enough for cities to recognize that, wow, if it's as bad as it was during the campfire, that public works employees should not be outside, and recreation staff should not be outside. But that, we're just beginning to talk about that at the county emergency services level. And community enhancement, I think you might have gotten it in your box. Community Enhancement Committee had the county health department come in and talk about smoking, and did you guys get this in your box? It talks about the various types of smoking programs and the grade that Millbrae gets. And I'm sorry, people of Millbrae, but we get a D, D as in second from the bottom on the smoking ordinance. But it's my understanding that we can copy a lot of model ordinances, or the city manager or staff mentioned, somehow I heard, we've got staff working on this, too, and it'd be great to get an update of where we might be on a smoking ordinance. And a lot of this is being driven by multifamily dwelling ordinances and how to be safe within your home.
Yeah, staff is working on that project, and also, we, there was a grand jury report, I think, we responded to.
Okay. So, not quite sure, we, the report came to community enhancement, and then we heard that the city is working on that. So we'll have to get back to community enhancement, so they don't spin their wheels on that. And the bike rodeo is coming up on May 11th. Hopefully, everyone is going to put that on their calendars. The age group is from six, age six on up to middle school and high school, and you can come and get a free helmet, and there will be helmets for adults, too. I see many, many adults in Millbrae riding without a helmet. Please come to the bike rodeo. The highway patrol is going to be there to fit you, so that you're making sure you wear your helmet properly. And we're going to have fun, food, games, art, and face painting. So please join us on May 11th.
Can't wait to do my face painting. Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many people probably read the paper this week, managed lanes. I know that's a scary word for somebody. The managed lane that is going to be going through San Mateo County will be an additional lane on the 101. So headache-wise, that's going to be a nightmare for traffic as that progresses. But end result is that hopefully it will provide more equity and, for buses, express buses going north and south, and also, there hopefully will be an equity program built in for car pools. The idea is that hopefully, it will reduce traffic in the long run. That's a long run. So, I know, we're all going to have to put up with the headache of the construction of an additional lane on 101, north and south. End result, if we're thinking positive way down the line, is that it's due to bring in about $20 million in revenue for the cities and counties of San Mateo County. Hopefully, used for all kinds of different things, like additional bus stops, additional access to public transportation, things that can help people move from A to B, home to work, and make it more accessible. People will have, the rate of what you're charged to use the lanes will vary as part of the timeframe and the number of people within the lanes. So that's a long way ahead, but there was a lot of press this week as they dedicated the managed lanes, and it's hundreds of millions of dollars, some of which has been privately provided by some of the corporations, I think it was Facebook or Google, somebody, the state, the feds, everybody's involved in this process. It will go to the 380, from the south of us to the north, 380, and then San Francisco will have to come up with their own connection. Always important, another article that was mentioned is that, what is it, rideshare programs? Going in and out of the airport right now, 27,000 rideshare pickups and drop-offs per day. So part of our traffic issue in our region here is a result of the ride-sharing going in and out of SFO. Part of the contingencies or modifications made at SFO is that you can actually park 30 minutes for free. So please, if you are in the rideshare program or you're picking up relatives, just park your car and let other people circle and pick up. The airport is accommodating 30 minutes of free parking to get your loved ones to and from SFO. And they're also adding another parking lot for another 3,500 long-term parkers. So they are ahead of the game as far as getting people to and from. The average this year is 57 million people, passengers going through SFO, which is likely to go up to 70 million. And in addition to that, the good part of this week's news was that they're looking at a new system which will allow them to take off and come in over the bay, which hopefully in the long run will reduce our noise levels. So that was the good part. I have been working now on what's called the Metropolitan Transportation Committee. I have another meeting tomorrow. This is all nine Bay Area counties, dealing with transportation, housing, air quality, all kinds of things here. We are looking at the nine Bay Area counties, and in addition to that, the mega-region, which is the surrounding counties. And if everything can come together somewhere in the long run, we hope to get that membership, give them a good idea of what San Mateo County, the 20 cities and towns within our county are actually doing, the wonderful projects we're doing for housing and transportation. I hope that we can educate them as to the great strides we have been taking, because I hate to say this, but to some extent, the president is correct in false news. The things you've been reading, all the legislation, everybody wants to correct housing by taking away local control. We have legislation by Assembly Member Chu, Senator Scott Wiener, whole bunch of things here, without really acknowledging the good work that's actually being done. So you're going to hear a lot, there's evidently 200 pieces of legislation, everybody in Sacramento is working overtime, to cure our problems without actually talking to us, which is not a good thing. So we hope to work with the legislative members to help every community come together and really make things happen in a positive manner. Millbrae is ahead of the game with what we are doing and the rezoning that we've done. So we look forward to all of that. As I get material, I will have the city post it regarding some interesting facts that have come out regarding just where people are transporting or trying to get to and from. So I hope to share that with everybody. I thank you for the opportunity. Again, Meadows Crab Feed this Saturday. You can still get tickets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Snyder, do you have something to add?
The mayor's being very kind in letting me speak about the Community Garden. We mentioned it earlier. The Community Garden is moving quickly. The rain is not our friend right now, because council approved it two weeks ago. Public Works will be grading it, and then we've planned a community workday. So this is any community group or any individual, the tentative date is Saturday, May 4th, and Sunday, May 5th. And it might get pushed if we can't get the grading and the pathways done. But if you're interested in helping to build some raised beds as part of a team, please join us on May 4th. And then the new, the other way that we want to get the word out is, if you are an avid grower, you grow flowers, you grow fruit, you grow vegetables, and you'd like more spaces to grow, please come to the city's website. It is live, and you can sign up. Right now, we're getting a list of people who are interested in having a plot at the Community Garden, which our first garden is going to be here at Central Park. I have high hopes that it'll be so popular, we'll set up other gardens. But hats off to staff who are moving mountains right now. And soon, we're now in the phase of going out and asking for money from community groups to help offset the cost for it, and trying to get as many donated building materials as we can. But it should be a really great community day of work. The only bad news I've heard from May 4th and 5th is that is the Lions Convention up in Redding. So some of the lion contractors that I was hoping for will not be in town. So we'll have, we're looking for people with good ability to cut wood, skill sets. And the other thing, I apologize, I missed the city's Lunar Festival. I'm sure the mayor's going to talk about it. I attended an event called Ignite. This is a program for girls from high school, college, and shortly after college, to encourage you to run. It's nonpartisan, but it talks, it helps girls learn how to find their voice, learn how to identify policies that they care about, and how to speak up for them. And I actually worked with a group of girls from the Central Valley, and if there are any parents out there watching, if the kids are already doing their homework, it's very powerful when young people come to talk to council. And when they're speaking for something that they are passionate about, that they care about, like the young girls who came from South San Francisco, actually, to talk about smoking at apartments, that's a powerful message. So young people out there, this is a program to help you. You don't have to run for politics, but if you're at all interested, even You don't have to run for politics, but if you're at all interested, even if you want to run for middle school class president, they have a program for you. It's called Ignite. Feel free to have your mom, or get in touch with me, and I can connect you to that world. It was a real great day to be with a bunch of women. And then, wouldn't you know, Captain Marvel showed up. So, that was the added excitement. So, I don't know how many people have been out to see Captain Marvel. I'm going on Monday. So, yay, women.
This is an International Women's Day celebration, so thank you. Councilwoman Aliva.
Just to coat tail a little bit on Councilmember Pappin's mention of the local control being taken away from the state, Prop 50 is for the supervisors' vote for their support on Tuesday. Was it today? Or next?
It was today. They are holding off on voting.
Very good. So, everybody can watch that and write their letters of concern, I would say, at that point. I wanted to say that last Friday was the fraud workshop that was held in the Community Rec Center. And it was, I stopped by, and there seemed to be a nice turnout there. And also, I attended the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee last Thursday, or actually, a couple Thursdays ago, on Feb. 28th. And Marco Mandri was there again for a presentation, and he's done quite a bit of work on the BID. And he made somewhat of a presentation that still needs a lot of work to go forward.
BID, you want to?
Business Improvement Development.
District.
District. And he made, I think that, I was going to make a request that you might want to ask him to come back to council for an update. It's probably a little bit of a different direction than we anticipated. The city manager was there, if you want to chime in on that part of what should be shared, or what, there's nothing really significant, I mean, concrete, but there was a little bit of a surprise to me with the direction that it was starting to form.
Yeah, still some more work to do. And actually, we have that scheduled for the next city council meeting.
Beautiful. Okay, so, that would be very, it's making progress. It's just, I think that everybody should come very open-minded with his suggestions. The next thing I just wanted to mention is, we have a homegrown nonprofit in Millbrae, and it's called One Hit Away. And it's about head injuries, and it talks a lot about football, and the injuries that happen, and how you can be rehabilitated with that. And that's going to be on March 28th at Green Hills Country Club. And I encourage anybody with any interest to support a homegrown nonprofit. Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's start off with this before I forget. There is a, we're voting for, the City Selection Committee is voting for representatives to be on the CASA Elected Advisory Committee. And we have applications from, I don't think I have all the applications here, but I understand Cliff, Cliff, just write this down, Cliff Lentz from Brisbane.
Donna Colson.
Donna Colson from Burlingame.
The new person from Foster City.
The new person from Foster City. Vera, and then there was, what? Then we had somebody from San Carlos?
I pulled it up.
What's her name from San Carlos? She's a new council member. Lowen, I think it was, Lowen?
Parmelo.
Yeah. Parmelo.
I think Debbie Rutter.
Who's that?
Debbie Rutter?
Debbie Rutter.
Oh, Debbie Rutter from Half Moon Bay. I'm glad to see there's a lot of, interested, two positions. And also, Jocelyn Manalo.
Daily City.
Daily City. Okay, so.
So, let me explain why you're going through the list here. These are two advisors, there'll be two council members from this county and one supervisory delegate. CASA is the housing initiative that was voted on, I will say now, by the Metropolitan Transportation Committee and the Bay Area Association of Governments to help improve the housing stock. And I will report that the legislative committee from the, legislative group from the Transportation Committee was not intending, it appeared, the chair and a bunch of others, to give a free pass to the legislature to go out and enact everything. What was reported was that they liked some of the CASA and wanted to work on other parts of it. So, to say that the Metropolitan Transportation Committee basically rubber-stamped all the aspects, I guess, is inappropriate, from what I heard on Friday. So, they were hoping that the legislation would come back to them, because a lot of the elected people are getting heat. So, this advisory committee is to advise, moving forward, on what types of legislation would work for our communities.
Because of the CASA compact, most of the members were all related or part of the development community, and so there were no elected, or many electeds on that committee, so this is.
Yeah, if I might clarify to this, CASA compact, which you're all going to hear about, was put together by two of the big cities, San Jose, Burke, or Oakland, and San Francisco. No representation from the cities and counties of San Mateo, although two of our representatives voted on it. So, there has been a lot of criticism, that a lot of voices were not heard and need to be heard now. So, that's what this is.
Yeah, and I did, I'm the representative for the cities of San Mateo County, for the associate Bay Area governments on the executive board. And I voted no, because, to me, it was a roadmap. And to me, it was clear it was going to be a roadmap. But I think people were in denial. And so, it got a vote at 9 to 18. And most of the big cities, of course, they all have a lot more resources than many of the cities in different counties, so they weren't really interested in hearing what we had to say. Councilmember Aliva.
So, the two elected, the two people that we would vote for to represent going forward to the ledge also could represent things that they don't want to go forward in the ledge. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, from what I'm hearing from Councilmember Pappin, is this is not a done deal.
This is not a done deal, was what was reported to me at the Metropolitan Transportation Committee meeting, is that those representatives were not rubber-stamping all of the 200 pieces of legislation there. One of the significant governance things that came out here is that the Bay Area has 101 mayors and represents 7.8 million people. The city of New York has one mayor and represents 8.5 million people. So, there are a lot of diverse opinions here that need to be heard from. And it's very important that those voices are heard and that the voters are heard, because Proposition 10, which was, I believe, rent control, only passed in two counties, San Francisco and Oakland. It was a statewide ballot measure. Certain cities within San Mateo County have already voted it down as well. That is one of the aspects of the CASA compact. So, it's important to remember that the voters have spoken, and that needs to be respected.
And the CASA compact basically removes all the regulatory requirements, local regulatory requirements from the local, the cities, and gives it to the developers. And they're using the housing crisis as their excuse to build without any limitations. So, and they bypassed the, they bypassed the local elected people to do this. So, that's the big objection. Okay, so, do we have any preferences? Can I have some names of preferences? I have Donna Colson.
I'll be the third vote on Donna.
I'm sorry, there are two.
Actually, I was just going to say, almost everybody there is representing a small city. I've gone to two economic conferences recently, and on this issue, it was really beefing up the small-city representation, to make sure that they're being listened to. But Pacifica, Foster City, Half Moon Bay, Burlingame is most like us.
That's right.
And I'll point out, too, Burlingame's approved a bunch of housing, so it affects them as, Brisbane has thousands of housing developments that are being proposed. So, I think comparably, they have the most at stake at this point in time, and.
I would agree.
Vice Mayor, yes.
Question, what exactly are we doing?
Well, no, we're just.
The mayor's going to vote for two.
We're polling.
You're getting input for your vote, okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking any action, we're not taking any action.
Yeah, we can't, it's not on the agenda.
Right, because it's not agenda, I understand. Vice Mayor Holliver, yours.
Yeah, so the two names that I think jumped out most to me were Mayor Colson of Burlingame, she penned an op-ed in the paper a week or two ago, that I think detailed her position on CASA quite well. And I think it's a similar view that would apply well to the city of Millbrae. And Councilmember Lentz as well, someone who I've had these discussions before, someone whose city has been under tremendous pressure from Senator Weiner and others to build an exorbitant amount of housing in the Baylands area. And I think his experience, you know, working through the Brisbane proposal and trying to navigate both pressure from Sacramento to build as much as possible, and pressure from his constituents, where only a couple hundred signatures could recall a council member in such a small town, and fighting against NIMBYism in his hometown, I think gives him an excellent perspective of finding a balanced approach to housing. And I would support his candidacy as well.
Thank you, city attorney, for earning your paycheck there. So, just let you know, we're following the rules, hopefully. Anybody else has any opinions? So, we have one for Cliff Lentz.
I would agree, to wholeheartedly, with both Councilmember Pappin and Councilmember Holliver.
Did you say you wanted Cliff?
I agree with both those. Also, Deborah Ruttick, they have been through the wringer on the West Coast, too, of us. But I understand that Burlingame and Brisbane really have the most at stake here. The important thing to remember here is, these cities are building housing, and we, with them, will continue to do so. But to hold hostage transportation money and not count all the efforts we're currently making is not appropriate.
Councilwoman Snyder, do you have a preference? Besides, I know you want Donna Colson, any other?
I'm okay with Cliff and Donna. My only, my third choice would probably be somebody from coast side like Debbie, or Catherine Manapour from Foster City, because they deal with, if there was a transportation win, that would be perfect. I think we're going to be learning from Foster City on how to stop people from driving through us to get between freeways. And they're already doing some experiments, but this isn't transportation.
Okay, so, meetings on the 14th, I will, I will respect my colleagues' suggestions. And thank you for your opinions. And to our representative at MTC, I really think that the CASA really should, I don't know what Metropolitan Transportation Commission has to do with housing, but.
I will say that the chairman suggested that the housing element be given to ABAG. That was one of his comments. So, hopefully, they will work, they're having issues with governance, who does what, since there's been the ABAG and Metropolitan Transportation Committee kind of all thrown together, so, and they have a new executive director, who's going to have a load of fun trying to figure all this out. So, hopefully, everybody will be, have a voice at the table. Thank you.
Hey, and thank you for the note from Councilwoman Aliva. Opening day of Little League is this Saturday at 9:30, 9 o'clock, I can't remember, 9:30 or 9 o'clock. Be there at 9 o'clock, be safe.
And Glade's birthday?
And we celebrate at Glade Bierfeld's 100th birthday, and she was very appreciative, all the councils recognizing her. And she was, she was obviously the hit of the party. Congresswoman Jackie Speer is going to have a town hall meeting also on this Saturday at 10 o'clock at the security room, 10:30, sorry, thank you for the update. Yes.
And Planning Commission meetings. Can somebody report on those?
Mr. Williams, can you?
Developments that are happening, people can attend Planning Commission.
So, last night, there was a public hearing for the project known as TOD 1. That is the Sarah Station, which is just north of the intersection of El Camino and Millbrae Avenue. That hearing was continued to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting coming up next Monday, the 18th, March 18th. The other TOD project, known as TOD 2, that is the gateway at Millbrae Station, at the, in the parking lot, current parking lot of the Bart Station. That public hearing was continued from the last Planning Commission meeting to actually a special meeting this Thursday, starting at 7:00 PM. For those that need an interpreter, we do have that service available here on site. And we're also working towards actually broadcasting via YouTube, in conjunction with MCTV and another company, to broadcast in Chinese. So, we're working on trying to get as many people exposed to these projects and involved with our community development.
Can we ask that representations not be made, that their final decision has already happened here? If you've gotten new renderings, can those be posted as quickly as possible, so people can see what's being proposed?
Yes, sir.
And offer their comments, which we would hope the Planning Commission takes seriously?
I echo.
There has been no final decision. If that is, if that message is out there somewhere, that's incorrect.
Well, it tends to be represented every time we have them here. So, I can picture that it will be presented such when we're not there as well.
It made it sound like the council was going to make the final decision, so the Planning Commission was, felt kind of muted. So, I would think that they do have the ability to decline the design, in which case, it would go back to the Planning Commission, not go straight to the city council. Am I right?
That is correct. They have the authority to deny that, to deny the design, correct.
Because the way it made it sound is though they can decline, but it's still going to go to the city council, so I.
It could be appealed, it could be appealed to the city council by the developer.
Sure. But they have the ability, and I think that should be made clear, that they have the ability to decline.
Or to ask for whatever changes they feel are necessary. I mean, what are the Planning Commission's for?
We will make sure that during our presentation, opening remarks, that that is crystal clear.
Okay, thank you.
I was here last night, and they did actually go through the new designs. They had different opinions from the council on some of the colors, but I, you know, they did.
I realize that, but it wasn't that clear. There was a question about how's the process going to work, it's going to, and I remember you did give them a dictorial, but I don't think it came clear to them that they understood that if they declined it, then it was, you know, the step is, it could be appealed, but still, they can decline it and have the design redesigned to have them reconsider again. So.
Yeah, and the city council only had a study session, so if the Planning Commissioners have another idea, that's what they're supposed to be presenting, offering. They shouldn't be, you know, well, this council member said that, and whatever. I mean, that's why we have a Planning Commission. I hope they feel empowered to get some good results.
Okay, thank you. All right, so for the, we had some good news. There's, some of the students at Mill High School has earned the right to compete in the National Cyber Patriots, which is baby cybersecurity competition. And out of 6,000 teams, they're 1 in 20. So, that's extremely impressive, and they're part of the Sea Cadet Program. So, I think we should give them some recognition, it's a very, very awesome achievement. And so, myself and the city manager, Tom Williams, and our community development director, Brad Mizer, right, Mizer, sorry, Brad, went to the, what is it called again, the Consumer Retail, something, something. But anyway, it was a conference for retail, the retail sector. And I think you guys, I mean, I think there's some interesting facts that you should know. One is that most of the money being spent now is not being, people would rather spend money on food than buying hard-tacked items. So, that's, than buying items like cars, durable goods, furniture, whatever. They'd rather go spend the money on food. And Asian food has become the mainstream, you know, it's pretty obvious. Yeah, we got, we got a really good thing going here. So, you know, we have one of the best Asian, reputation for the best Asian food in the Bay Area, and 12 Michelin restaurants, so that's pretty impressive, 12. And so, also, they're really interested. And so, also, they're really interested in wellness, and they're also very concerned about their future. So, they are willing to, they'd rather, they'd rather spend the, their, their energy on making sure that they have a future. And they're not using cars as much. And we already knew that because they don't want to buy items, they want to spend it on food. Brick and mortar, some of it is still coming back, especially the online store, because they found that when they put a brick and mortar, their, their online sales goes up 20, 30%. It's a pretty, pretty interesting fact. Also, they, there was a, there was a presentation on the different generations and, and what they're looking for. And they're looking for, they're craving inclusiveness. They want a community. So, that's why you see a lot of shopping and malls being, building, they're building community centers. If you look at Hillsdale, the reason why they build a living room concept is because they can have, people can congregate and meet, get out of their houses, because they're going out to eat and not spending much time.
I went to the 50-year celebration of the King Center in San Mateo. Community centers are very, very important.
Yes. So, our community center is very much needed. And in the PCE, there's a $10,000 proposal for a reach code, which is the, for any city that puts on the agenda, a, to discuss a reach code, even if it's not, you know, written, we discuss a reach code. So, a reach code is basically, they're trying to electrify buildings, provide electrification for like vehicle, electric cars and stuff like that. So, 90%, this is a really interesting, eye-popping fact, 90% of the people who live in multifamily dwellings, which is apartments and condos, they're 50 years old. So, a lot of them don't have the infrastructure for electric cars or whatever. So, and I, at first, on being on that board, didn't think that stage one was a really good way to go. Stage one is basically plug it in your car to an extension cord, a regular 110. Yeah, for a long time. But it turns out that, you know, there's really not much options for these older buildings. So, it's best to get something than nothing. So, I'm on board now. Okay, so, thank you for this meeting. Thank you for the support of the council. And again, don't forget the crab feed, Meadows Crab Feed coming up March 16th as well. Saturday's going to be very busy, so I hope you have your running shoes on. Thank you, staff.
In adjourned close session, Mr. Mayor.